February 16th, City Council Meeting is called to order. We have our invocation by Reverend Q E. Hammond, Pastor, Antioch, Missionary Baptist Church, Pratt City, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Counselor Sheila Tyson, District 6. Please stand.
Let us pray. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, Thou who hast brought us thus far on our way, Thou who hast by Thy might led us into the light, keep us forever in the path, we pray. Lest our feet stray from the places our God where we met Thee, lest our hearts drunk with the wine of the world, we forget Thee. Shadowed beneath Thy hand, may we forever stand true to our God, true to our native land. Lord, we thank You for this day and allowing us to live in a land where we can freely call upon Your name. I ask now, dear Lord, in the name of Jesus, that You would bless this city of Birmingham. Oh, God, bless this council and bless our mayor and all of the civil servants that work to make our lives more livable. Forgive our sins, keep us focused on Thee. We pray for peace in our hearts, in our neighborhoods, and in our city. Lord, hear our prayer, for we pray in the name of Jesus who is the Christ. Amen.
Blue the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call, Roberson, clerk. Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Present.
Councilmember Lundey. Councilmember Parker.
Good morning.
Morning, sir. President Proten, Roberson.
Present.
Councilmember Rafferty. Councilmember Scales.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tyson. President Austin.
Present. Good morning, Mr. Clerk. All right, the minutes are, we have minutes from November 10th, 27th, and 24th, 2015.
Make a motion for approval, Mr. President.
It's been moved and probably second, Abbott. Roberson, Abbott.
Okay, voting should be open. How would you like to vote, Councilor Tyson? Thank you. That vote should be up, Mr. President.
That item passes. The minutes are not rated from December 1st through February 9th. Communication from the mayor. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, Mr. Clerk. Good morning, Councilor.
Good morning. The Southern Museum of Flight is one of the many area attractions that the city of Birmingham is proud to showcase. We're excited that they are featuring an exhibit on the Tuskegee Airmen. Here to give us more information today is Director Dr. Brian Barsani. Brian? Where's your assistant this morning? In school?
He's probably, he might be downstairs, as a matter of fact. His bus was running late and he was supposed to meet me here.
Okay.
Actually, this was number two. I had a meeting with the mayor last Friday and I brought over one of our interns from Holy Family, Krista Ray. And he's one of our interns and he interns with us on Fridays as part of a high school internship program that we have. And he represents one end of the spectrum. He's a freshman and he got to come downtown, come to City Hall here for the first time, meet the mayor. It was a great experience for him and today, and he might be showing up soon. We have an intern who is a senior and he was going to come down with me today. And what I've done with my interns is something that's rather unique. They get to experience a good bit of what we do at the museum as a business, as an organization, as a cultural arts institution. So they come out of this internship rather well-rounded and take tangible skills with them that they can put on their resumes. So they're certainly making themselves more marketable when it comes to applying for colleges, scholarships, and eventually jobs. So I wanted to make mention of that, that not only do we have internships for college students, but we are getting them prepared before they even get to college by offering our high school students internships as well. And then specifically, like the mayor had mentioned, and I spoke to everyone here a few weeks ago about an event that we have coming up, and I promised during that presentation that I would have materials for you, press releases, all the pertinent information, and I have those this morning and I'll leave them with your respective administrative folks. But that event is fast approaching and that's going to be next week on Thursday, February the 25th, at 6:00 PM at the Southern Museum of Flight. And that's when we will officially unveil our Tuskegee Airmen B-25 bomber. That's going to be a work in progress and we are going to work on this over the next year or so. And I mentioned that, that day that I spoke, what the impetus for this exhibit was. And something I didn't mention too was thinking back, it actually came to fruition back in 2013 when we were celebrating 50 Years Forward. And we got together with some of the other cultural arts organizations in the community and we figured out what we could do and what we could offer. And what we could offer was sort of telling the story of those who laid the groundwork before, the folks who come along that we think of when we think of the modern civil rights movement, who were blazing the trail in the early 1900s, up and through the 1940s, and then just beyond the World War II time period. And that's what this exhibit is going to do. It's going to tell the story of those gentlemen who in the mid-1940s at Freeman Army Airfield essentially staged a sit-in, defying a commanding officer's order to keep an officer's club on that particular military post segregated. And it results in over 160 arrests and three court marshals, and then eventually these are overturned. And like I mentioned before, just a couple of years later, the president will sign that executive order to desegregate the military. So I would certainly invite all of you to attend. I've left information with the mayor's office and I'll also leave information with each one of your respective administrative folks, and you're all certainly invited to attend that night. We will also have the president of the Tuskegee Chapter of Tuskegee Airmen, Colonel Roosevelt Lewis, U.S. Air Force retired, along with other Tuskegee airmen who were there at that time. And I'm really fortunate to have this opportunity. We had some of the Tuskegee airmen, about 12, attend our first exhibit unveiling back in 2008. And these gentlemen are, most of them are in their 90s now, in that entire World War II generation, when you think of it, even the youngest ones at the end of the war who were, you know, 18, 19 years old are now in their 90s. So I'm fortunate to have this exhibit unveiling coming up shortly. This will also kick off our 50th anniversary at the museum. So this exhibit serves as a testament to our museum, our mission, our longevity as an organization. And I really appreciate the opportunity to once again come before you. I thanked Counselor Rafferty for inviting me last time. Should we thank the mayor for your invitation this morning as well? And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this time.
Go ahead, Counselor Abbott.
I just want to, I'd like to know where you got the plane.
Where we got the plane?
Yeah.
It came to us by accident somewhat. We had gone to a museum that had shut down. It was on an air force base and they were going through some restructuring and sort of reallocating their assets. And we went to find something completely different. We were on the lookout for some other fighter jets from, say, the Vietnam era, and we sort of stumbled across this. And when we looked into its service history, we saw that it had served at Alabama in 1945 and '46. And then it's interesting, it actually returns to Birmingham specifically in the 50s to be retrofitted. Just down the street from the airport, we see the big hangars where the Old Kemco Plant used to be. So it had been to Alabama twice in its service life before it was eventually retired in the mid-1950s. And it's the only one that we know of, that we can confirm, that still exists, that flew with that 477 bomber group that was instrumental in desegregating the services back in the 1940s.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your question. All right. Thank you all again.
And Brian, a lot of people knew that the Tuskegee Airmen who went on to fight in Europe flew the, is it P-58?
The P-51.
P-51. But many people don't know that they were also trained and flew the B-25.
That's right. I think, you know, a lot of times the fighter pilots get the attention, and deservedly so, especially with their service record. Certainly the movies helped, the HBO Tuskegee Airmen movie, and then the Red Tails movie produced, you know, by George Lucas some years ago. But sometimes the guys who flew the bombers get forgotten. They don't get a chance to, say, defeat Nazi Germany in Europe during World War II, but they certainly are successful in defeating that social injustice that had, you know, existed within the military for so long. And then a few years later, the 1954 decision to desegregate schools is going to come along. So it certainly provides that impetus for several, you know, more court decisions that are going to be made over the years regarding civil rights. Thank you, sir. Thank you all again. Appreciate it.
The past few weeks have taken, we have taken the time to celebrate Black History Month. We have paid tribute to our past and now, we will now take a look at our future. We have with us today students from Epic Elementary School this morning to give us a brief Black History presentation. You guys ready? Y'all, come on up then.
Salutations, City Council. My name is Chauncey Nickerson.
And I am Chloe Kennedy.
We are first grade students at Epic Elementary School. Chloe Poole and Kimberly Jackson here are in our class. They represent the dream that many of our ancestors had for a better day and a brighter tomorrow. The rest of our class represent the living dream. We are the future of this country. So we are here today to share what we are learning in school because education is our passport into the future.
Today is Tuesday. Today is Tuesday. What shall we do today? Greetings, City Council. We are first grade students from Epic School and we have a lot to say. We are here to share with you the many things we learn each other. A, B, C, D, E, F, G. We know how to count odd numbers way past three. One day you're two, and then you're four. We are subtracting, counting, money telling time, and more. You are looking at a group of readers, writers, problem solvers, and speakers. Who knows? One day we may be council leaders and teachers. The itsy-bitsy spider. Did you know that spiders are living things? People, plants, and animals too. We learn this in science. This is true. So much information fills our brains, from domus to schemers, we learn it so plain. So City Council, don't forget Epic's name. Great things are going on there, all to help children prepare. Twinkle, twinkle, little star, you're a future star far. We need you to see great things over our lives. We are this country's future and prize. If you're happy and you know, clap your hands. We are marching to the tune of our own band, singing proud and tall. We want to keep learning until we get our call. To lead this country into a better day, City Council, keep your eyes on us. We are on our way.
Thank you all so much. Could you come up and let each child introduce themselves, or you introduce them? And also introduce yourself.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Jacqueline Dent. I'm a first grade teacher from Epic Elementary School. Let me say the amazing Epic Elementary School. And I came along with 22 brilliant first grade students, as well as my wonderful student teacher, and my brilliant, amazing, supportive parents as well. And we want to thank you all for yielding a few minutes of your meeting this morning to share with us and celebrate these beautiful and amazing children that I've brought along with me. So many times we hear about many negative things that are going on in our schools, but today we get to celebrate the wonderful things that are going on. And what better way than to hear from these 22 students? So as they give you their names, we're going to kind of exit out of the door so that you all can carry on with your meeting. And I'll start on this end.
My name is Kimberly Jackson.
My name is Chloe Poole.
My name is Chloe Kennedy.
Chloe, wave at your mother up here, Chloe. Where are you, Jennifer?
My name is Tyler Dawson.
My name is Chauncey Nixon. Now I'm seven years old.
My name is Caitlin Hicks.
My name is Madison Brown.
My name is James.
My name is Cameron Coleman.
My name is Joshua Miller.
My name is Tyler Dillon.
My name is Jabril.
My name is Ethan.
My name is Tyler Harry.
My name is Marla Laugh.
My name is Amari.
My name is Jemai.
My name is Jameel.
My name is Jaden.
My name is Jonathan Assouza.
My name is Sidney Coney.
My name is Joshua Gentry.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate you bringing them down. Take care now. Counselors, continuing with the theme of Black History Month, the Negro Southern League Museum will host a pitch talk on Thursday, February 18th, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. The event will be a panel discussion on baseball in Birmingham, featuring Dr. Laird Powell, professor of Communication Studies at UAB, and author Jonathan Nelson, oh, well, no, Dr. Powell is also an author. Then we have Jonathan Nelson, most of you all know Jonathan from the Birmingham Barons. He's the general manager there. Then we have Ron Papa Jackson, who will also participate. And Ron was a coach, I believe, with the Boston Red Sox and a former player with the California Angels, and many others. So we look forward to hearing them at the Negro Museum, Baseball Museum. I want to thank all the counselors for the kind resolution and participation in my mother's home-going services this past Friday. Your presence and your kind words lifted my entire family up, so we're deeply appreciative of that. I'd like to ask Reverend Woods, if you would, come forward. Bishop Woods would like to share with you all about a prayer breakfast that they're having.
Thank you, giving obedience to the presence of the Lord, to our most honorable mayor, to this most honorable council, honorable brothers and sisters of the Lord. We're certainly happy to be here and go without saying, we along with the council and employees here, praying mightily for our mayor for his strength and his family. A city united in prayer is the theme of a free prayer breakfast that SCLC is having this Saturday morning, 9 o'clock, at the St. Joseph Baptist Church, 500 Ninth Avenue North. My brother used to pastor that church. We have at least 20 pastors who've been assigned a subject to pray about two minutes. Met with them on some occasion, said it won't be running over as if they're making a keynote. They be praying for the council, the mayor, education, just praying for different things. And our keynote speaker on prayer will be the pastor of that great church, Reverend Boykins, Honored. We have to pray with our eyes on God, not on the difficulties that we have. We got to look at God and don't just focus too much on the difficulties. Prayer changes things, it's a problem solver, it's an anxiety healer, and it certainly will change our hearts. Furthermore, Your Honor, we want you, everybody, to save this date. That's this Saturday morning now, 9 o'clock. Save this date, February the 29th, the last day of the month. SCLC will be having its annual meeting here. This is our local chapter. I'll be bringing my president's annual address. Where do we go from here? The chaos of community, and I put a slash there. Sunshine in the clouds. I'll be giving you my vision and things that God has laid on my heart that we must do and we will do during this particular year. Come out and meet local board members, register to vote, sign up as a member of SCLC, hear about the vision, you can become involved in more. Hear this, what is really at stake right now? It's up to us. God has left, chosen you. But we got to pray every day, see what His will for us, you somebody, God left here. Last but not least, Your Honor, I want to announce, if I may, the Keepers of the Dream Award. It's already been planned by SCLC, we've been working on this for a while, we have it every year. Keepers of the Dream, we have eight categories this year. Education Award, Criminal Justice Award, Community Service Award, Religious Award, Volunteer Award, Rising Star Award, Human Rights Award, Youth Cultural Leadership and Civic Environment. Recognize the youth group who demonstrates an intangible quality which uplifts their community and is engaged in various leadership and our civic activities in his or her school community. Got to recognize the young folk who coming up and wish them, they may not have gotten all the way there yet, but they're certainly on our way. And we want to thank you very much. Keep us in your prayers. Love one another. God has put us in this city and we are certainly to support God if we don't love one another and pray for one another. What does God look like you, look like us, when we love one another?
Thank you, Bishop. That's all I have at this time, counselors. All right, do we have nominations of boards and agencies?
No, sir.
All right, let's move on with the consideration of the consent agenda.
Okay, the consent agenda starts on page two with item number two. Page three, we have items seven and eight on consent. Page four, we have items nine, 10, 11, and 12 on consent. Page five, we have items 13, 15, 16, and 17 on consent. Page six, we have items 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23 on consent. Page seven, we have items 24, 25, 26, and 27 on consent. Page eight, we have items 28, 29, 30, excuse me, and 31 on consent. On item 30, first line it should be, I think that's Meckinson, before Medical Surgical Incorporated, that's Meckinson before that. And then on the last line, well, 1, 2, 3, third line up, after bid submitted, meeting specifications should be added there. Actually, it's the fourth line up from the bottom. Meeting specifications after bid submitted should be placed there. Page nine, items 32, 33, 34, and 35 are on consent. Then we skip over to page 12, we have items 43, 44, and 45 on consent. On page 13, we have item number 47 on consent, and I think we have one addendum item, 49.
All right, do we have any councilmember, Ms. Proten? Thank you, Mr. President. On page three, item, well, we need to keep that off, don't we? Okay, let's move on. Page... It is be off too, yeah. Page 10, item 36. Please, you go ahead, Counselor Hoyt, if you want to.
I want to leave it off.
Okay. Item 37?
Yeah, I object to that.
Item 39? Okay.
Yes, 39, I object to that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. 38? You want to put 38 on consent? Does anybody object to that? Why are we on that page? All right.
Object.
Mr. President? Did we consider putting item 37 on page 10 on consent?
Somebody objected to that, too.
Okay. And on page 11, item 41?
Okay.
And on page 12, item 42?
You want to add item 41 and 42 to the consent agenda?
Yeah, it's a miracle.
You want to do item 40?
No. They're employees.
What about 49?
No, no. Sorry. Don't push your luck here.
All right, do we have any others wish to speak to the consent agenda? Do we have any members of public wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium if there are any members of public wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing. All right, we're ready to vote, Mr. Clerk. We have a move in a second. Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, voting should be open. Councilmember Scales? That vote should be up, Mr. President.
That item passes. Next item, Ms. Clerk.
That would be item one.
Yep. Yes.
Item one, an ordinance to further amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham. Case number ZAC 2015-19, to change zone, district boundaries from R3, single-family district to B1, neighborhood business district filed by Ronald J. Moore, owner of the properties located at 3310 38th Place North and 3318 38th Place North, situated in the southeast quarter of Section 18 Township 17 South 2 West.
of section eighteen township seventeen south to west in the hearing of all its supporters.
We have a mover in a second.
I move approval.
Second.
Abbott Parker, I guess you're going to do it, Counselor Abbott.
Mr. Gambrell, would you read our case, please?
Yes, ma'am. This is ZAC two thousand and fifteen dash nineteen, the Englewood Neighborhood, and it is a request to rezone subject properties from R three, single-family residential to B one, neighborhood district district to allow the use of a restaurant. The subject point five zero seven acre properties are located at thirty-three ten and thirty-three eighteen thirty-eighth Place North, thirty-eighth Place North in the Englewood Neighborhood. North of the subject properties are mainly single-family homes, all of which that are zoned R three, single-family district. South of the subject property is an Exxon service station, which is owned QB two, qualified general business district. East of the subject property is owned QR five, qualified multiple dwelling district. And west of the subject property are commercial businesses, all of which are zoned CB two contingency general business district. Mister, well, the applicant is requesting to have two parcels that are currently zoned R three, rezoned to B one, to be developed as a two, twenty-one hundred and sixty-six square foot waffle house. The applicant's proposal complies with the B one zoning district regulations for a restaurant and proposed site plan shows twenty-seven parking spaces, which meets the parking requirement for the site. The city's long-range land use plan identifies the property for residential low, therefore the proposed rezoning is not consistent with the future land use plan. The Englewood Neighborhood met at its regular scheduled meeting on October nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, to review the proposed project. They voted seven to zero to approve. The neighborhood also requested the applicant represent to the neighborhood once they decided what would be exactly developed at the site, and they also requested Q conditions to be placed on the property that limit the use of the property to those in the B two general district excluding the following, gas station, convenience store, payday loan, package store, and dollar store. The Englewood Neighborhood met again at its next regularly scheduled meeting on November ninth, two thousand and fifteen, and reviewed the actual proposed site plan for the waffle house. After that meeting, on advice of the planning staff prior to the ZAC meeting, the applicant amended their request to rezone from B two to B one, since the B one will allow the restaurant use. The first zoning advisory committee meeting didn't meet on December first due to lack of quorum, but then they did meet on December eighth, two thousand and fifteen, and voted to recommend approval of the applicant's request to change the current zoning of subject property from R three to QB one with the following conditions, and the first condition is submittal of a site plan, and the second was to exclude certain uses from B one, including gas station, convenience store, payday loan, package store, and dollar store. The Planning and Zoning Committee of the City Council met a special call meeting on January fourth, two thousand and sixteen. At the meeting, planning staff on recommendation from the legal department stated that it had been determined that the name of a particular business could be not excluded as part of a Q condition stated in the ZAC resolution. Therefore, the planning staff recommended the Planning and Zoning Committee should exclude general retail uses larger than five thousand square feet. The Planning and Zoning Committee voted to recommend approval of the applicant's request with the Q conditions listed below, and asked staff to consult with the legal department in Englewood Neighborhood and applicant to verify that the language of the Q is satisfactory. Upon further review from all, it has been determined that the Q condition is approved by Planning and Zoning Committee is acceptable and therefore has been included in the ordinance as follows. Once again, the first one is for the site plan, and then the second condition is to exclude certain uses from the B one, including gas station, convenience store, payday store, package store, and general retail over five thousand square feet.
Thank you, Mr. Gambrell. This is a public hearing, we're going to hear from the applicant first, then we will hear from anyone in the, in the audience who wishes to ask questions or make comments
Good morning, counsel and honorable mayor. My name is Ronald J. Moore. It's a pretty tough act to follow these kids in Reverend Woods, that was quite an impressionable thing. I have with me Brian Pressnell, his engineer, on this project that we're doing, I have my son and partner, Joe, and I have Evan Dejanovic, who is a relator that has represented us on this property and this development. We, the property consists, some of, I know that you know, was an abandoned house there, we have removed that now, it's all been cleaned, and it, the property is ready to develop. We have been trying to, to get this project off the ground for, will soon be eleven months, so I guess probably would be in order to, just to, to answer any questions that any of you might have, or, or any of the, if anyone's in opposition to this.
And this is a waffle house, in case no one realizes that yet, this is going to be a location of a new waffle house. Does anyone have any questions from the council? No names are up, so?
My name is up, I put it up, I don't know why you don't see it.
Oh, your name popped up. Counselor's count.
Yes, let me say this upfront, I was sharing with the council member for the district, the only concern that I have, honestly, is that there was a waffle house that was in the area, right there along Tarrant, in Tarrant City, on seventy-nine, and I just wanted to make sure we had Q conditions that speaks to the maintenance and upkeep, both inside and out of this building. That was one of the problems that they had, and I think ultimately may have been the reason why they closed. Can that be implemented, Madam Chair?
Well, Q conditions are not for upkeep, they're for zoning-related issues.
Okay.
So certainly the city, through code enforcement, can talk with them about if there, if there is a maintenance problem, and certainly the applicants can talk about their plans for the facility.
Well, you know what, then, thank you, counselor. Mr. Ten, can you come up right quick? Is there anything that we can do that, that even if I'm speaking incorrectly, I welcome waffle house, I don't have a problem with that, but, but what can we do so that that area maintains the dignity and certainly the comprehensive land use plan that we're trying to do to, to clean up some of our areas?
Well, you know, the ordinance is going to require that they buffer the site, you know, the rear of the site adjoins residential property, and so the new, the new landscaping chapter and the new zoning ordinance is going to require that they install a buffer there, a vegetative buffer. So that's one thing that is going to be required of them from the start, and that's something that we included in the ordinance for just this reason, you know, so it's, you know, prescribed that they have to do that. So that's one thing, I think the other stuff, like the counselor had mentioned, you know, as far as, you know, debris and pickup and stuff like that, you know, I think it's just incumbent upon the applicant to tidy the place up, and if, you know, issues persist, then, you know, court enforcement would have to deal with them.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Ten. So, sir, you are the applicant, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, in the few seconds that I have left, can I get you on record as committing to making sure that you keep this business clean both inside and out, meaning, and let me be very specific, when I say clean on the inside, you know what I mean, I, I, I don't even want to sound derogatory or demeaning, because that's not my point.
Sure, I understand, and I, I'm not familiar with the waffle house that closed at this point. I will soon be doing business in the city of Birmingham, sixty-two years. My first peddler's license was in nineteen fifty-four, and I've never been cited for any business that I've had here, we have over twenty businesses currently that are in, within the city limits of the city of Birmingham. The Waffle House Company, they have franchisees that will be operating these stores, and, and the Waffle House, they're very, very strict on their image and their, their operations.
Well, Madam Chair, just a few more seconds, if you don't mind, madam, is, so it sounds like you are the property owner, you are not a part of the management team, is that what it is?
That is correct, we own the property and develop it, I might go ahead and, and say we, the property directly across the street, well, first, the property adjoining this, that the alley separates, is an abandoned shell store that has been closed for over probably ten, twelve years. It's also included in this, we, there was a junkyard there, we've had that removed, that I didn't allude to a moment ago, but that, we've cleaned the, all of that up, we own the property across the street, which is seven acres, as you turn on Airport Boulevard, that, that the Exxon store is on, and Exxon gas station, and this, this entire area has been extremely depressed in the, in the, there've been transits that live in the woods there, and we, the house that we tore down, we had to get the people out of the house to, to tear it down and clean it up. So, we believe we'll be bringing the community up, but what we're requesting you to approve.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Scales.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any other members of the council? Okay, if y'all would have a seat on the front seat, are there any members of the public, anyone from the community who would like to come and speak, either pro or con regarding this request or to ask questions? Seeing none, Mr. President, I believe we're ready to vote.
Ready to vote, Ms. Clerk.
This with Q conditions, right?
With, with the Q conditions.
Voting should be up. Counselor Member Tyson. That vote should be up.
That item passes, next item, Ms. Clerk.
Should be item three.
Okay.
An ordinance incorporating section eleven dash forty-three dash fifty-six Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, management and control of finances and property of municipality except as otherwise provided in the title. The council have the management and control of the finances in all of the property, real and personal, belonging to the city or town, this is the first reading, UC.
All right, we're going to move it a second, for UC.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right, that fails, next item.
Item four, an ordinance establishing the general fund and capital fund, budget reporting process policy, same on that item.
A mover in a second.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right, we'll bring it up next week, next item, Ms. Clerk.
Excuse me, item number five, on page three, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to a contract with AT&amp;T in the amount of one hundred and three thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty cents to install underground conduit at multiple locations throughout the city of Birmingham, as specified in Amendment A of the contract.
We have a mover in a second.
Mr. President, move the item.
Have a second. Roberson Parker, have any questions about this item? All right, we're ready to vote, Ms. Clerk.
Counselor Member Hart, that vote should be up.
That item passes, one abstention from Counselor Abbott, next item.
Should be item number six, a resolution authorizing the mayor to issue a firm commitment to the, to allocate one million five hundred thousand dollars of the city's HUD home investment partnership funds to the Housing Authority of Birmingham District for the development up to one hundred units of affordable housing in the North Tittysville community, in support of the Housing Authority of Birmingham District application to the Alabama Housing Finance Authority for low-income housing tax credits, and if the project receives tax credits from AHFA in the two thousand and sixteen funding round, to disperse the one million five hundred thousand dollars to the Housing Authority of Birmingham District for the city's home funds.
Mr. President, I move approval.
All right, do we have any speakers? Ready to vote, Ms. Clerk.
That vote should be up.
That item passes, one abstention from Counselor Hoyt, next item.
Item fourteen, a resolution appointing four members to the Birmingham Library Board for five years, expiring December the thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. And I think that's Counselor Member Abbott's.
All right, move the item.
Second.
Roberson Abbott, Counselor Abbott.
Yes, we have four members, the first is John Scott Vowell, this is a reappointment, he served one term, this would be his second term. The next is Katrina M., excuse me, Regina Ammon, Ph.D., she's replacing Katrina M. Watson, whose term expired on twelve thirty-one fifteen. Eunice Johnson Rogers, who is replacing Sam Rumor Jr., term expired at the same date, and James A. Sullivan, who is replacing Patty Pilkerton, whose term expired on that same date. So those are our four recommendations for appointment.
All right, do we have any other names that want to enter into nomination? All right, we'll close with notes.
I'm, Mr. President?
I'm sorry, Counselor Tyson and Counselor Scales.
I have one, I would like to enter from District Six, have no representation on the board, and that's Willie Davis, his resume, she would be in front of you.
We need to specify what, yeah, which term and?
The, um...
Who, who would they replace?
First lady that she called out, the first name.
Regina Ammon?
Regina Ammon.
Ammon.
Was the first lady.
The first lady.
The first one, yes, that one.
So for that term, which expires December thirty-first?
And we just have to take that one out?
You will have to vote on all of them individually, that's what we're going to do. Okay, Counselor, is that it, Counselor Tyson?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Scales?
Yes, I have Ms. Fatima Carter, her resume should be at everyone's disposal, and Sullivan is who, I want to make sure, give, Mr. President, if, if the chair could give me, it was, I think that was Sullivan that I heard, that is currently on the board, I want to make sure.
They read them out again, please.
No, Sullivan is not currently on there. Vowell would be reappointed, and then we've got?
Regina Ammon, Eunice Johnson Rogers, and James A. Sullivan.
Right, so Sullivan is currently on the board?
No, he would be, he would be appointed.
These are the people who are being recommended for appointment.
Right, and that's one, and you said upon recommendation, Mr. President, that we need to also say for what, whose term that they are to replace, is that right?
That's right, and what we're going to do is, we're going to vote on them individually, so we'll take, we'll just take the votes on the individual terms or appointments to those particular terms.
I get you.
And so we get to, so the first one that we have is Scott Vowell, so we'll, do we have any other names to be placed in nomination? So we'll close with those names, then we have to vote on them individually, the first one is for the term expiring, is for the reappointment of, of Scott Vowell.
Okay, we didn't have any other person for the Scott Vowell position, did we?
No, no.
So we just, we can just do that one, I can do that all and get it over with.
Right.
All in favor, Scott Vowell, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that one passes, Mr. Vowell will be appointed, reappointed, the next one would be for the, for Katrina M. Watson, her term expired.
Oh, this is, this Regina Ammon is the person we're recommending.
Yeah, but the term expired December thirty-first, that's who is currently there, and the person that is on that one is Regina Ammon, and the one that Counselor Tyson recommended, and that will be, who is your name, Counselor Tyson?
Willie Davis.
Willie Davis.
Okay, what I'll do is call each counselor and they'll identify by the name of the person they like to appoint.
Okay.
Counselor Member Abbott?
Regina Ammon. Regina Ammon.
Counselor member Hoyt?
Davis.
Counselor member Parker? You would say the name of Mr. Davis or Ammons, Regina Ammons? Or?
Say it, Davis. Say it, Davis.
All right.
Did he say Davis?
Yeah.
Say so.
Counselor.
Hold on, who are the other people? Pass on me, let me go back and see who it was.
Um. Pro Tim Roberson.
Davis.
Counselor member Scales?
Davis.
Counselor member Tyson? President Austin?
Davis.
Counselor member Parker?
Uh Davis.
Okay. Yes.
Point of clarity.
You go ahead.
Mr. President, thank you.
Who?
Y'all got me a little confused up here with this appointment process.
He's not here. Oh, he just popped up. I'm sorry, Counselor Lund, left you out.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I didn't see him in there. Davis. Okay.
So just so I understand, recommendation for the appointment uh from the committee was Hammond?
Regina Ammon.
And so Davis is being presented as an alternative consideration, right? Well, on Counselor Roberson, um I would like to change my.
Yes.
Not to understand the process for Ammon. Thank you.
Okay, looks like we have two for um.
All right, um Mr. Davis will be appointed to that s- that term. Next, next person.
All right, go ahead. I think you got the list. I don't.
The next person is uh.
Eunice, Eunice Johnson Rogers, replacing Sam Ruehmour.
Ruehmour, okay.
All right.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Any abstentions? All right, that person will be appointed. The next one.
James A. Sullivan, replacing Patty Pilkerton.
All right.
And the other name was Fatina Carter, Fatima Carter. So we have to vote on those two.
Okay. Counselor Abbott?
Um Sullivan.
Counselor Hoyt?
Sullivan.
Counselor member Lundey?
Carter.
Counselor member Parker?
Sullivan.
Pro Tim Roberson?
Sullivan.
Counselor member Scales?
Carter.
Counselor member Tyson?
Carter.
Pro Tim, I mean, President Austin?
Carter. That, uh Ms. Carter will be appointed.
That, that's a four-four tie.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we, four-four.
Yeah.
So that, neither one of those get appointed. It fails.
The, the person that's currently there would stay on until.
Until we select someone else. Yep.
This is one of your constituents.
She was serving unexpired terms, I mean, expired terms, so.
Okay.
That was Ruehmour?
No, Patty Pilkerton.
Okay, I'm sorry, right.
All right, that fails. We'll come back to that one next week.
Okay.
Next item?
Next item should be thirty-six. A resolution approving payment to Cumulus Birmingham and Alabama in the amount of five thousand dollars to provide advertisement pursuant to section eleven dash forty-seven dash nine and section eleven dash forty-seven dash eleven Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five in accordance with section three dash one dash seven, the Birmingham City Code, this being the sole source of supply.
Do we have a mover and a second?
Who died?
We have a second?
What now?
All right, we don't have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Abbott second. Roberson Abbott. We have Counselor Hoyt?
Just trying to understand what, what kind of advertisement we're doing with uh Cumulus? Yeah. I ain't got no answer.
Maybe nobody knows.
Do we have anybody answered a question? All right, um Counselor Hoyt, do you wanna? Would you want to move for delay?
Counselor, all I can tell you is the invoice that was received said it was for the Birmingham Bowl, but I have no other information as far as exactly what the ad said.
Okay.
So that was attachment, I guess?
I didn't find any.
Do we want to delay?
Come back to that, we can get help, Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, just delay until we get a.
Want to lay it on the table? All right.
Lay it on the table or?
Hoyt made the motion. Scales seconded to lay it on the table.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, item thirty-seven, then item thirty-six, we lay it on the table.
Okay, one second, please. Item thirty-eight should be next. A resolution approving payment to Master Solutions LLC Birmingham in the amount of seventy-two thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars to provide governmental affairs consulting and lobbying over a seven-month period, July two thousand and fifteen to January two thousand and sixteen, in accordance with section three dash one dash seven of the Birmingham City Code.
Move the item?
Second.
Hoyt, Abbott. Do we have any speakers? Ready to vote, Ms. Clerk?
Voting should be up. That vote should be up.
That item passes. One no vote. Um, next item?
Should be item thirty-nine. A resolution approving payment to Summit Media LLC Birmingham in the amount of twenty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars to provide assorted radio advertisement in accordance with section three dash one dash seven of the Birmingham City Code, this being the sole source of supply.
All right.
Move the item?
Second.
Roberson Abbott. We have Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, and I just wanted to ask, um how, what is this radio advertising for and how in heaven's name is this the sole source of supply? Cause that's the way it was on the last one that we tabled. It said that the, the advertising was the sole source of supply, and I, I can't understand that, and there were no attachments in our binder that I could find.
Wow.
That explained what this was.
Counselor, the reason we say it's the only supply is because oftentimes they are wanting to target certain audiences, and there are certain radio stations, TV stations, whatever, that will only, that, that are targeted to certain audiences within the city or the surrounding area. So that is the reason we call it a sole source. Yeah, you could probably advertise on any radio, but if you, if the people that you're trying to target do not listen to that radio station, then the ad is fairly worthless. So that's why we, we deem it as a sole source. Now, this particular one, this twenty-one some odd thousand dollars was for a variety of ads on a variety of stations, uh for the Christmas tree lighting, the Magic City Classic, uh Empowerment Week, uh some more Birmingham Bowl. So this was a variety of ads on stations like uh Six Ten Heaven, uh ninety-five point seven Jams, uh ninety-eight point seven Kiss FM. So those were the radio stations that these ads were on.
Okay. Well, I understand now. Thank you.
Counselor Scales?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, Counselor Abbott, it pays to know, cause I still don't understand, because if that's your demographic, WATV and JLD can reach the same audience. They play gospel and they reach the urban community, so I, I don't understand myself. And I'm more interested in if, if we're supposed to be paying for this, um I see that there is a general account. What, what is account is this coming out of? I'm sorry?
Uh Counselor, that is coming out of the mayor's office marketing and promotions budget.
Okay, but then let me ask you something. I'd be interested in knowing, what was the commercial that was played? What was the content?
I can't remember to tell you what that was. It was promoting those events, though.
What events, Mr. Burney?
The events were the Birmingham Bowl, the Christmas tree lighting, uh Empowerment Week, Chris- uh and Magic City Classic.
We paying something for the Magic City Classic out of this, Mr. Burney?
Yes, ma'am, because it.
Is that in addition to the Magic City Classic budget that the council has already approved?
Yes, it is, and the way that works, Counselor, is that the, each department has its own departmental budget, and they're allowed to spend that budget on those things that are important to that particular department. And once we exceeded what we had uh, had done with the Magic City Classic budget, we chose to further promote the event with our operating budget.
And Mr. Burney, because I have the uttermost respect for you, I appreciate you, but I'm gonna make one comment, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Burney. I'm finished with you, Mr. Burney. See, this is the kind of thing that I must admit, uh, Mr. President, that this is why certain council members keep talking about what the law department allows for us to do and not do, because with the law department, what we have been instructed is that if you appropriate a certain amount for a particular event, or whatever the case may be, you can't go outside of what you have already appropriated. So I'm trying to figure out what law constitutes you being able to do this action that's before us today, when you're working by the same principle that you say the council can't do. And I know, because I bump into this all the time, that if we go outside of whatever's been appropriated, whether it's through an outside uh entity or whoever that we're dealing with to facilitate the process, if we go outside of that, we've been instructed by the law department that we can't do that. Well, I mean, I'd like for you to say it on record. I mean, if, if, if that be the case, cause I'm telling you, that's what we've been instructed. So if that's not the case, please let me know, so that the council can begin to do the same thing. Cause all we want is for the good of the city. Whatever works for the entire city, and whatever that law that constitutes us being able to do that today, we need to be able to have that same capability, Mr. President, to do that as this council.
You have a question for Mr. Bentley?
It's for the law department, whoever, whoever wants to expound on record.
On the record, I can tell you, first of all, I never told you such a thing.
You didn't, but the law department did. That's why I said the law department.
The way that usually works, let, let me, did you, Mr. Roberts, give her that specific event?
I don't recall those specific words now.
Oh, hold on, Mr. President, before we go any further, before my time is up. Then let me tell you the source of where I got it from. Originally, it was Justice Cook, that when we decided to do in terms of a facilitator of our funds, we were instructed, and Mr. Roberts was instructed as a part of that, that if the council decides to use this facilitator, whatever that was, i.e. for me, Rev Birmingham, you had to then list whatever amount you were appropriating based on whatever the council approved in terms of your event or program. And you couldn't go outside of that, and the council had to vote on it as the contract stood the form. You couldn't go outside of that. So I'm telling you, that came from Justice Cook.
I, I, I completely understand what I believe to be your confusion. And, and that simply, that advice was about spending on that particular contract with that facilitator. That, that's different.
No, sir. In fact, I can get you a copy of the contract, because I keep copies of my contracts. And I'm telling you, we had to take an outline, and I'm not trying to put Mr. Roberts on the spot, okay? So what I'm, I'm telling you, I can provide you with a copy of the contract right now. And that contract specifically delineates what program, how much you're putting to that specific program, and we had been told by the law department, i.e. through Justice Cook, and even Mr. Roberts has followed suit, because that's what he told them to do, which was, you couldn't go outside of what you have already appropriated for that particular project. And I'm not the only one that's been told that, because I know Counselor Hoyt has been told the same, cause we both been having the same issue.
Let's just see if we can get, is that the case or is it not the case?
I think that the constitutional bar that underlies your complaint says that you can't add to a contract. You can't add extra compensation to a contract.
Okay.
It seems a hard concept to understand, but we're talking about barring the additional compensation to a contract already passed for a certain amount of compensation.
So what you're saying? Hold on one sec. But hold on, what you're saying is, Mr. Bentley, that we can't, if we approve a contract for fifteen thousand, we can't add any more money to that contract. We have to uh vote on a new contract, if we wanted to spend more money with, with that same.
For additional services.
What Counselor Scales is, is referring to is, uh and I see, I understand the confusion, is uh a contract that was approved for us, for services, and which, you call it a what?
They call it facilitator.
Facilitator. And so if what she was instructed back then was that she couldn't spend any more money under that current contract, it had, there would have to have been a new contract if we're gonna go beyond the originally approved amount. Is that correct?
No. Mr. President, I have a point of clarity. He, here's what I'm trying to say, because I, I see how it can be confusing. In other words, what I'm saying is that when Rev Birmingham as a facilitator gets fifty thousand dollars, what the law department told us is then you got to outline what those fifty thousand dollars per each program has an amount to it on the overall contract. So it wasn't like you said fifty thousand dollars go to Rev Birmingham. You said fifty thousand dollars to go for Black History Program, X number of dollars, uh X number of dollars go to X program. And then we were told, you cannot go outside of what you have appropriated based on your program amount, that you have told Rev Birmingham, i.e. by way of a contract, that you cannot spend over that for that specific project. So I'm saying, but you're doing the same thing yourself today. It's the same principle. Cause if you're saying that, no, no, if you're saying that you have gone outside of your Magic City Classic budget, and now you're coming back and you're saying, we want to pay for some advertising associated with Magic City Classic, it's an amendment. It don't matter how you look at it.
The, the, the bar is to contracts, not to budgets.
Right.
I was told by, Mr. President, as a point of clarity, I was told by Justice Cook and the law department, that we could not go outside of whatever that budget that we gave as a line item for Rev Birmingham, out of the fifty thousand dollars. If you put ten thousand dollars aside for the Black History Program, you cannot spend ten thousand and one dollar over that particular amount. If you did, you have to go back and have another contract, and the council would have to then revote on it again.
For the one dollar?
For the one dollar over. You cannot go one dollar over. What, and so if you had, out of the fifty thousand dollars, Mr. President, if you had forty thousand dollars left, you couldn't get one dollar out of the forty thousand dollars to make up whatever overage if you spend over that amount.
Well.
Otherwise, you wouldn't be in compliance with the contract. Now, that's what was told to me.
Let me just say this, Counselor Scales. We've been up here a while on the council, um and we've seen a lot of things come before us that are inconsistent with uh what, you know, they, they change from week to week depending on whatever, who's all in their feelings on that particular week. So let me just say this. What we need to do is stick a pin in this particular item. Uh we can vote, move on and approve it, and when that same situation comes back up with you and this particular, uh you know, whatever's fifty thousand or a hundred or whatever it is, we just draw back to, we point back to this date, at this time, and say, this is how we're able to do it, and we just move on with it. So we don't have to go back and forth with them, cause you're not gonna get the answer that you're looking for. We just know how it's being done right now. That's all I'm saying. You're not, so it doesn't.
I agree with you, Mr. President. So can, can we have whatever, whatever that state law that they're, they were reciting that goes along with this, that gives them the authority to do that? I'm gonna support this item today, I, but, Mr. President, I'd like to have that. Uh they can tell it to me verbally or whatever. I'd like to get a copy of it to go along with it, Mr. President. Uh, they can tell it to me verbally, or whatever. I'd like to get a copy of it, to go along with it, Mr. President.
Well, Counselor Horton.
I wanna be in compliance.
I think we can clear this up, because it seems to me that, um, the administration is not doing anything that the council is not doing. And if, you know, if we establish continuity in terms of scopes of work, of what is required, then it seems to me that, um, what is placed in the contract is, is a matter of academics and continuity. Okay? If it works for the administration, it oughta work for the council. One body's separate responsibility, but one body, we're working on behalf of the city. I, I think what we need, uh, Counselor Scales, is a copy of the contract that we had with Summit Media. And then let that be a model for what we do for media. Okay? And any other, um, organization that we, uh, we hire in terms of consultant, or whatever, and, and, and do it that way. Because what is happening is, you know, depending on what week it is, um, what, you know, what day of the week, uh, things seem to be changing. And so I think it needs to be some consistency. Because I'm telling you, it's not, it's not working. We should be spending time on, on, uh, on these things, because it oughta be, you know, we done done enough of these now, with all them degrees y'all got in, in, in the Law Department. Somebody oughta been and figured this out by now. I mean, it's, I mean, because it just continues to change, and some folk don't have any trouble at all getting their stuff through. And some of this stuff we doing on a yearly basis. You know, we doing it. And so why is it that certain things come through, some don't? So let's get a copy of that contract. And so we establish some, some uniformity, and maybe, um, well, I'm almost sure it's a contract. Are they paying us money? Well, we, well, then we need to delay it until we get, get, get the contract, so we can establish a consistency. And, Mr. President, and I would ask that, uh, we take it up in the, uh, Committee of the Hall, so that we can establish. And, and that way, whether it's the mayor, whether it's, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. April, or whether it's Counselor Scales, you know, anybody, this, this is what we do. This is how we write it up, so we can get it done. Okay? Yes, sir.
There is a bar in the Constitution that says that you cannot add extra compensation to an approved contract. There is a bar in the Mayor Council Act that says that you cannot overspend a budget. No, we do that all the time. No, because we, we amend budgets all the time.
Right.
And, and I don't know whether it's something that's readily forgotten, but the council does it weekly. They change the budget so that they won't run afoul of, of that bar in the Mayor Council Act. We're, we, we in the Law Department aren't confused about it. We'll happily try to explain it, but, uh, I think you're gonna have to come in with an open mind, uh, a mind that doesn't assume that people who want to help aren't being hostile to you.
Mr. President.
Counselor Horton, you done?
Well, I'm... I think, Mr. Thomas, that it seems to me that we're not talking about something different. All I'm saying is whatever we do, whatever rules we, uh, we, uh, act by, or we enable, then it oughta be the same rules for e- everything, particularly if it's the same kind of, um, uh, project, or the same kind of, if it's media, if it's, uh, consultant, whatever it is, that language oughta be consistent, and so that we don't have stuff sitting over there, um, in the Law Department, uh, and then Chad's telling us one thing, 'cause somebody holding it up, or they hadn't gotten to it, or whatever. And what I'm saying, if you establish the rule, and this is what the contract needs to look like, then he can prepare it in that manner. And so there's no confusion. But, but what happens is, depending on what day it is, that tends to change. I know, because I've had the same kind of experience. Maybe not as much as, uh, Counselor Scales, but I've had it. And so I'm saying this, we doing the same stuff. Now, when I met with, uh, Mr. Roberts and, and, and the, um, and Justice Cook, um, and what have you, uh, he seemed to be, he was saying the same stuff I was saying, but, you know, Mr. Roberts saying diff- something different. He said, "Well, just go ahead and do it." You know, so we established, and Ms. Kid was in that meeting. You know, and so we established that, um, and I, and I believe as, as a model, whatever, and we just get it done. But, you know, but we don't need to be, uh, this is, this is a waste of my time, and a waste of this council time, that every so often, we, you know, we have these inconsistencies that, uh, you know, that impedes the, the council's ability to do what it needs to do. And I don't think this is any different. So whatever contract you all did with Summit, uh, Media, then we need to be consistent in that. So we have, and, and matter of fact, I was told, if you target a specific group of folk, that you couldn't use city money for that. Now, that, you know, and, and this morning, you say, "Well, if you targeting a specific group of folk, that you can." That's what you just said. You interpreted that. That's what you said. Now, I was told that we couldn't do that. You know, if you wanna reach the youth, you couldn't do it. It gotta be for the whole city of Birmingham, right? Which has many demographics, many, many dynamics. And so all I'm saying, uh, don't put the group down that you're trying to target. Say, "I'm just trying to target Birmingham." That's all I'm saying. And I think if we do that, then the mayor gonna be right, and we gonna be right, and everybody is. You shaking your head, but that's what, that's essentially, that's, now, that, if, now, tell me, Mr. Roberts, am I lying? 'Cause I know what you said to me.
Mr. Roberts, do you have any? No response. Counselor Tyson?
You forgot, Ms. President.
I think it's just a misunderstanding. Now, y'all just, come on now.
Nah, it ain't no misunderstanding. It's, it's very real.
Well, you know, they told me the same thing, but I don't wanna argue now. Come on.
That's not arguing. It's about getting an understanding.
I know it. It ain't arguing. Just calm down.
You done, Counselor Tyson?
Yeah.
Counselor Scales, your second time.
Thank you, Ms. President. Well, we've been called to be stewards of the city's money. And so if it means it sounds like an argument, whatever the case may be, I think that all of us should be in a position that we, if we're asked about why we spent one penny of the city's money, we should be held accountable to it. So my question being to the Law Department, yes, sir. And so my, my, my question to the Law Department, Mr. President, is that if you're saying that it would be against the law, or unlawful, for us to spend outside of a budget that has already been appropriated, then would it be illegal for the council to vote and take this action today, which obviously this is outside of the original appropriated budget? Is that right or wrong?
It's not a question of that. I would have to review the, the facts, Ms. Scales, because I, I think the fundamental problem between my interpretation and yours is based on the facts. I don't think you have an argument with me about what the applicable law is, and I don't think I have one with you that I understand what the applicable law is. But the, the underlying facts, I would have to investigate.
Well, then, Ms. President, being that, that being the case, then I would only say then I can't speak for the council. I'm gonna act accordingly then, because, uh, I know what has been told to me through the Law Department. I actually, Mr. President, don't believe that it is right that if you allocated a certain amount, that this council has to then go through that one fifty thousand dollars anyway, and then you gotta outline every program you're gonna do at the start of when you plan to do it, through a facilitator. So with that having said, I'm just gonna govern myself accordingly, but I can tell you this much. And folk can call it an argument. I don't care. If you're spending outside of what you originally had, but you're saying this council can't do the same thing, we get from week to week, whenever we come up with an initiative, or a program, ordinance, don't matter what it is, it's always, we're being told from the Law Department, for the most part, what we cannot do. I'd love to see the day, interim director, Mr. Bentley, when we get to a point that this council can get some advice from the Law Department that say, "You actually can do some things." 'Cause it's impeding our progress. Maybe others don't see it, but I, I do see it that way. We have a thousand rules when it come down to us trying to do different things in our districts. But yet, we always see some type of, uh, uh, alteration of that same rule being applied when it comes down to the administration. It's not fair, Ms. President, and I think it's wrong.
Counselor Horton, your second time.
Yeah, well, um, let, let me ask a question. So it, is this an amendment, or this is the budget for this particular item?
This is in addition to what was already approved from the Magic City Classic. He said that earlier.
As I mentioned earlier, counselor, each, each department has a non-departmental amount that they appropriate, appropriate at the beginning of the year in marketing and promotion. They're allowed to use those funds how they want to use those funds. So we, we don't earmark those funds that way, so that's where these funds are coming from. So, so we're allowed to spend money, additional money, on whatever we choose to do so. And each one of these is a separate contract, so it's not as if it's a, a add-on to an existing contract. So if we're gonna promote the Christmas Tree Lighting, we do the contract for the Christmas Tree Lighting and so forth.
Okay, well then, because there, there are no attachments here.
All right, I think the only thing that we attach councils were copies of the actual invoices. Uh, we, we can go back and pull copies of the contracts, uh, for, you know, and give them to you.
Yeah, would help me to understand if, if, you know, if in fact, um, i- i- if that's the route we going, then it would need to say, uh, what department, and, and at what amount, from that particular apartment, that, 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 uh, that did this.
Okay. All of these are from the mayor's office, but we, like I say, we can pull a copy of those agreements for you.
All right. All right, we're ready to vote.
Voting's over.
That vote should be up.
That item passes, one no vote. Next item. Mr. Clerk, you wanna take the, uh, item thirty-six off the table?
It was thirty-six and thirty-seven?
It was thirty-six. I don't think thirty-seven was laid on the table. Thirty, yeah, thirty-seven on consent.
Um, I just need a motion.
You have a motion.
Smooth.
I'm afraid we'll let it be known by saying aye.
Aye. All right, that, Mr. Byrne, or Mayor, Mayor, do you have someone that can speak to item thirty-six?
Hold on one second, Mr. President.
Okay. Can you speak to item thirty-six and thirty-seven?
Item thirty-six, Counselor, is that the one relating to cumulus?
Yes.
Okay, what was the question?
Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, well, my question was, this says that we're providing advertisement for five thousand dollars, and it's the sole source of supply. And I just wanted to know what we were doing and why it was the sole source of supply. Is this the same reason that Mr. Nichols said, Nichols said that we're targeting certain audiences, uh, concerning certain events, that only those audiences would be interested in?
Uh, for the most part, Counselor, that is correct. Sometime we have relationships with different, uh, vendors that, that we sort of partner with, and they will be like a co-promotion.
Okay, I remember that. You came to Committee of the Hall and talked about that one. I couldn't remember. The cumulus name didn't ring a bell, but I remember it now. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, we're ready to vote.
Is it, this is not for thirty-six and thirty-seven, is it?
This is just item thirty-six. Thirty-seven was on consent.
We didn't do anything with thirty-seven, Mr. President. We didn't do anything with thirty-seven.
Yeah, it was on consent.
No, it wasn't on consent.
'Cause I got a question about it.
All right, go ahead. We're ready to vote. Did you have a question about this one? Okay, we're ready to vote on item thirty-six.
Can you give me, who would move in a second? Letha?
It was Parker and Abbott.
Okay, thank you.
I, I do have a question, Ms. President. On thirty-six, so what, what was the advertisement for? What was this advertisement for?
Cumulus. Just a second, Counselor. Cumulus was to promote the Birmingham Bowl activities. Uh, it was during the time that we were, uh, waiting for the announcement, so they were promoting the hype to, before they awarded us the game between Auburn and, uh, whoever the other team was. I can't remember right now.
Okay, so, okay, so then let me ask you this, uh, Mr. Byrne. So this five thousand dollars obviously is in addition to whatever promoting dollars that were allocated for this particular, uh, program, right?
Yeah, Counselor, I'm not sure if there was, if, if I remember correctly, there was no budget for promoting the Birmingham Bowl. This actually came out of our coffers to try to promote the hype for the game.
Okay, so then, my question would be, and just educate me. Since this is five thousand dollars, which is under ten thousand dollars, why is it before the council then?
Because as Ron had said earlier, it's considered more of a professional services, and it doesn't really clearly fall under the bid law, because what you're trying to do with that is if you were, say, for instance, if you wanted to promote, um, an event, uh, and you, if you did it by the lowest bid, the lowest bid may not reach the market that you intended to reach. And the reason we promote and advertise is to try to reach a broader market, so, to increase the economic impact of the entire game. So that's why it falls under the professional service. And because we had exceeded the five thou- what, the ten thousand dollars per three dash one dash seven ordinance, we had to come forward at this time to get that, uh, get that approved.
So obviously, we, we had spent, and I know we did, so out of the three hundred thousand dollars that, that the council appropriated to the Birmingham Bowl, it didn't include this marketing money at all?
That does not, we don't, we don't budget anything for marketing for the game. That's basically to host the game as, as part of the sanctioning fee. Per contract.
Usually when you have an, an event, Mr. Byrne, how you plan to market that event is always included in your budget, but I understand. Thank you, Ms. President.
All right. All right, we're ready to vote. Voting should be up.
That vote should be up.
That item passes, one extension. Next item should be thirty-seven.
Okay, uh, motion on that. Same, was, um, Parker Abbott?
Yes.
Okay.
You didn't read it, though.
I didn't get a chance. I think we just tabled both of them. Okay. Uh, thirty-seven, a resolution approving payment to Jeremy Kemp, Doing Businesses Outdoor Event Specialties LLC, on the honor of Alabama, in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars to provide barricades for the City Fest and Birmingham Bowl pursuant to section eleven dash forty dash one and section eleven dash forty dash nineteen, Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, and according with section three dash one dash seven of the Birmingham City Code, this being the sole source of supply.
Do you have a mover in a second?
Uli, aye.
Second.
All right. Robertson, Abbott, have any? Counselor Scales?
Thank you, Ms. President. My question in regard to this being that this is, uh, City Fest. As I recall, the council didn't approve the one hundred thousand dollars for funding, uh, for this event. And so now we're paying for barricades, although the council didn't support the sponsorship of the event. And I'm just interested in knowing, how did we arrive at that? 'Cause this, even though it says City Fest, is not a city-sponsored event.
Counselor, please repeat that question.
Sure. I'm saying that the council did not approve, there are some things that I marked to my memory. And so the council was asked to, um, approve one hundred thousand dollars for City Fest, which occurred in August two thousand fifteen. The council didn't support it, as a result, it was withdrawn from the agenda. With that said, I'm asking, so why are we now coming back paying three thousand, or asked to be considered to pay three thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars for barricades for an event that the council was not supporting? And so therefore, it's not a city-sponsored event, so are we now paying for barricade for private events? Cause I'd like to know, I'm gonna stick all of this in a nice little file, and I'm saying it where the public can know. Cause every time we get around here and deviate from rules, I'm gonna start going public with every time, and I'm gonna have it in writing, cause it's not right. So this is considered a private event. Jack Schaefer was the promoter of the event, and he made sure everybody knew about it, and I like Jack. But nevertheless, when you put yourself out front, it is what it is. So are we now into promoting private events or providing for support for private events in the city? Being that the city council authorizes agreement, and we did not authorize this, so it wasn't a city-sponsored event, why are we paying for barricades?
Counselor, I would have to go back and verify this, but my mind tells me that when the council approved the budget, I think it was sometime after the event had occurred.
No, we didn't approve this at all.
Again, I'll have to verify that, but I'm thinking that the hundred thousand dollars was approved in the budget, but it was after the event, and.
No, it was taken out of the budget.
What's that now?
It was taken out of the budget.
Okay, and besides that, you know, if the funding source is a problem, if it was not in the budget, then naturally, we would absorb that in, in the mayor's office budget, because it was an event that was supported by the city.
That's what I'm, Ms. President, so here's what I'm trying to articulate, Mr. Bernie. It couldn't have been a city-sponsored event because it was removed from the city's budget. When the budget was passed, this, and Ms. Abbott, you should probably remember, you were chair of budget and finance at the time. This was removed from the, the, the overall budget. Ms. Barnick can help you out. So it wasn't in the budget, it was originally proposed to be in the budget, but it was removed from the budget. And when it was brought to the council for a vote, which was the latter week, or last week or so in July, because the event was the first week in August. And the council, obviously because the support was not there, the administration withdrew it. So now we're coming back paying for barricades for an event that wasn't approved by the council?
And again, counselor, the mayor's office was in support of the event. I'll verify the budget approval for you. As a matter of fact, I can get that information within a couple of minutes, if you want to set this aside.
Thank you, Mr. Bernie, and, cause I do respect you. Ms. President, I'm gonna, I'm gonna end on this note to say, this is a mayor and council that equals the city. So just because you have one branch of government that support a private event, doesn't make it be the city event. And that's the reason why council members, I'm gonna leave that right there. That's why we get treated the way we do. So I'm gonna, yeah, Ms. President, I'm through with that. Mr. Bernie, I respect you. I'm telling you, Ms. President, it wasn't in the budget, it was removed from the budget, and it was withdrawn from the agenda. And I'm still saying, why are we paying for barricades for a private event? And if this is what we're doing, then any other private event that would come after this event should be given not only the same consideration, but approval. That's all I'm saying, Ms. President.
Counselor Abbott.
Yeah, I just had two questions. Okay, this five thousand dollars is coming out of the mayor's budget, right?
Uh, yes, a portion of it is, but if we have to absorb the whole thing, we can, yes ma'am.
It's three thousand, thirty-eight hundred.
The total amount is thirty-eight sixty-five, and we provided two funding sources. One of them is the line item in the budget, and the other one was coming out of, out of our budget, because nine forty-five was actually not part of City Fest. That was for barricades for the Birmingham Bowl.
Okay, and the only other question I have, and I'm sorry I misspoke about the amount, but the sole source of supply, is this really the only company in the city of Birmingham or the area that provides barricades for events?
No, no ma'am, that's an error, and that should be deleted, that, that should not have been in there.
This was bid.
So this one does, there are other companies that can provide barricades, yes.
Okay. Thank you. So we're gonna correct this so that people don't read it in ten years and find out that it was a sole source of supply when it really wasn't. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Do you have any speakers? Ready to vote?
Councilmember Hoyt Abbott. Tyson.
That vote should be up.
That item passes, one no vote and one extension. Next item?
Should be item forty.
Item forty and forty-nine.
Forty-one was on consent.
No, it's at forty and forty-nine.
I'm sorry.
Is that an addendum?
Yeah.
Item forty. A resolution approving the following expense accounts. April Odom, Director of Communications, Mayor's Office, Baltimore, Maryland. One thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-six cents, November seventeenth through November the eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Take Higher Action Summit. April Odom, Director of Communications. Mayor's Office, Washington District, Columbia, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-five cents, December the ninth through the twelfth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend World Heritage Dinner and Lobbying Day. April Odom, Director of Communications, Mayor's Office, Washington District, Columbia, one thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-three cents, December the fifteenth through the seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend congressional meetings. April Odom, Director of Communications, Mayor's Office, Washington District, Columbia, three thousand one hundred and eight dollars and five cents, January nineteenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen, to attend the United States Congress Conference of Mayor's Winter Meeting. April Odom, Director of Communications, Mayor's Office, Washington District, Columbia, one thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-five cents, January thirty-first through February the first, two thousand and sixteen, to attend congressional meetings. James Roberson, Counselor Pro Tem, City Council, Washington District, Columbia, one thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-five, twenty-four cents, September the sixteenth through the twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Congressional Black Caucus. And item forty-nine.
Forty-six as well.
Item forty-six, a resolution approving the advanced expense accounts of city employees. And item forty-nine, addendum item. Item forty-six, item forty-nine, a resolution approving the following advanced expense accounts. Camilla Gray, Committee Assistant, City Council, Atlanta, Georgia, seven hundred and three dollars and forty-four cents, February the seventeenth through the twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend Environmental Protection Agency Group Meeting. Connie Horn, Records Management, City Council, Atlanta, Georgia, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents, February the sixteenth through the twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend Environmental Protection Agency Group Meeting. Stephen Hart, Councilor, City Council, Atlanta, Georgia, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and two cents, February seventeenth through the twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend Environmental Protection Agency Group Meeting. Renee O. Johnson, Administrative Assistant to the Mayor, Mayor's Office, Atlanta, Georgia, seven hundred and three dollars and forty-four cents, February seventeenth through the eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, environmental, to attend Environmental Protection Agency Group Meeting. Chaz Mitchell, Deputy Administrator, City Council, Atlanta, Georgia, eight hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents, February seventeenth through the twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend Environmental Protection Agency Group Meeting. William Parker, Counselor, City Council, Atlanta, Georgia, one thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-eight cents, February sixteenth through the twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend Environmental Protection Agency Group Meeting. Jose Perry, Committee Assistant, City Council, Atlanta, Georgia, two hundred and thirteen dollars, February seventeenth and the eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend Environmental Protection Agency Group Meeting. Brittany Sharp, Director of Public Information, City Council, Atlanta, Georgia, eight hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents, February seventeenth to the twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, to attend Environmental Protection Agency Group Meeting.
Second. Parker. Roberson. Ready to vote, Ms. Clerk? On those items?
Voting should be up. That vote should be up.
Item passes, one no vote.
Next item, Ms. Clerk, should be item forty-eight.
Forty-eight. Item forty-eight, a resolution, I'm sorry, receiving the emergency purchase notice from the Purchase Agency relative to Professional Engineering Support Services at Eastern Area Landfield.
All right, um, we have, we have no speakers. We're ready for older new business, counsel skills?
Thank you, Ms. President, as always, I want to thank the citizens of District One, as well as the city of Birmingham for affording me the opportunity to be their voice. We do have one neighborhood meeting that will take place on tonight, that is Sun Valley. They meet over at East Pinson Valley Recreation Center. And I did want to say this, because I was absent, Mr. Mayor, from your mother's funeral, and that was only because I was away at school. Nevertheless, I want to share my condolences with you, and I share with my council members in supporting you during this time, so I wanted to make sure I said that. Also, we have two items that I'd like for the, and I'm looking for it now, Mr. President, for the Public Works Department to consider, and that is trash that has not been picked up in the nineteen-hundred block of Eleventh Place Northwest, which is in Echo Highlands Community. Also, we have illegal dumping that has been sent over as well on the following roads, which is Carson Road, Sixth Street Northwest, Lawson Road, leading up to Highway seventy-nine. There's some more that I'm going to add to that, but nevertheless, that's all that we do have for today. I do want to invite everyone that is interested in learning more about city policies and the way we do things to come to the Governmental Affairs Committee, or you can view it by live stream, if you're looking now. If you're in the audience, I invite you to come, that'll be this upcoming Monday, February twenty-second, two o'clock, in conference rooms D and E. I also want to ask for a resolution of sympathy for Coach Alan Plump, who was the coach, one of the coaches and teachers over at Huffman High School, and I saw move.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Move the item?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Mr., thank you, sir, Mr. Plump passed on yesterday. Our prayers, obviously, is with his wife and his children, and all of our Huffman Viking family members over there. We love Coach Plump, and so I just wanted to make sure that we did take the time to do that. Just a little FYI, I remember years ago that my father had prints in Birmingham. I was a little lad as a teenager, but I'm sure some of you all know that he had a protege, and she passed on yesterday as well. Her name is, legal name is Denise Matthews, but she goes by the name Vanity. So just kind of a little FYI, I'm not gonna do a resolution in that regard. But some people know, she only had the opportunity to come to Birmingham once, and so he had the opportunity to be able to do that. So that's all I have, Ms. President, and thank you.
All right. Counselor Voight?
Yes, thank you, Ms. President. Just wanted to announce that Green Acres Neighborhood Association will meet this Thursday, actually, this Tuesday. This is an old message. But anyway, they meet tonight at the Lipton Christ Worship Center. That's at six thirty, that's the Green Acres Neighborhood Association meeting. And the next Public Safety, Transportation Communication Committee will meet on March the seventh at four-thirty on Monday at City Hall. Counsel, I would all make this observation, because I've sit on other committees, but I don't think in the history, and, you know, I'm just mentioning this. We've had committees meet at the same time. And so, um, I'm just wondering why we have two committees meeting at the same time?
What are those committees?
And that's planning and zoning, and we have Transportation, Safety and Communication meeting at the same time, and I sit on the other committee. Yeah, but anyway, I just want to make that observation, you don't have to change it. But I don't think we've had that, that kind of situation since I've been on the council meeting. But, you know, obviously, we hadn't gotten over certain things, but, you know, it's neither here nor there. But I just want to make mention of that. Seem to me that's by design, but nevertheless, um, then what I would do is simply, you know, and I guess some folks say, well, you didn't come as often, perhaps not, but at least I had the choice. But in this case, I don't have a choice, cause it's held the same time. And I think I changed my meeting before, anybody changed theirs with respect to the new assignments. But nevertheless, you know, if we can have a discussion on that, I don't know. But if she doesn't, it's fine with me. But. Well, I talked to her yesterday, and it's happened more than once, so I'm thinking it was just, you know, it was just a mistake or whatever, but obviously, that's what she set it up to be, I don't know. But it's always the same time as the other committee, and we've not had that kind of conflict here before. But, you know, new occasions, teaching to do this, and so I'm all well with that. I did want to say, Mr. Mayor, beautiful service for your mother, awesome service. And, and I just, I thank God for, for the experience. Didn't know her, but I get a sense of who she was. I told Michael that, you know, I had deja vu because my mother was a great cook. And, you know, so it was like a revolving door, and it seems to me that's what was happening at the Bay of Home. So, but we thank God for those persons like your mother, like my mother, who just, you know, all about the community and about, you know, empowering folk. So as a fellow told me, said Hoyt, he said, at my mother's funeral, he said, Hoyt, I don't mean no harm. He said, but that's the best funeral I ever been to, and so I just want you to know. It was one of the best funerals I ever went to, because it was just so spirited and so uplifting. And, and I just thank God I was there to witness it. And I want to say what a yeoman's job that our counselor did, representing the counselor at your mother's funeral. She did an outstanding job, and so we just want you to know that. But, but thank you for allowing me to come and participate, because it was great, great, great homecoming. It's a pleasure, all right, and we still praying for you and your family.
All right, Counselor Parker?
Yes, sir, thank you, Ms. President. There are a couple of names that were left off on the travel items, and so I just try to move those in unanimous consent. One was Greg Jones, it's a hundred and fourteen dollars to attend the EPA meetings in Atlanta. Also, Jay Roberson, three hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents, and Jonathan Austin, three hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents. So I'd like to move those in unanimous consent. Abbott, it was a mistake, I'm sorry.
It's always a mistake.
I know, I'm sorry.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Move the item?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
And also, just one announcement, Mr. Jenkins has the men appraisal be at Galilee Baptist Church on the twenty-first at three P.M. So I think, Mr. Jenkins, he's left, but that's all, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Counselor Tyson?
Thank you, President, good morning, Mayor. We have, February the twenty-second, Five Point South will be meeting at South Side Library. Woodland Park will be meeting on the twenty-second at four P.M. at West Center Street. We have a big celebration in District Six, the demolition of Lockway Gardens, Wednesday the seventeenth at nine A.M. Everyone, we're asking for you to come out, and we are just excited about the whole Woodland Avenue. I have been talking about it, and I actually, our mayor had the opportunity to go over there and to see the guys removing the asbestos, and I took, I had, I picked up three children just to take them over there. It scared them to death, they had on those white suits, and they didn't know, they didn't know exactly what it was, and one of them was coming out from around the building, it actually startled me. And they all had on their white suits, and they was removing the asbestos in that area, but I was just, I'm so excited about this. Also, we're having an event on the eighteenth where the state of black colleges. colleges, uh, will be hosted at, uh, Parker High School from twelve to two-thirty. We have, um, Kenny Glasgow will be actually coming in. Uh, that's Al Shoppen's brother. He will be coming in from Tops. Also, we will have Carly Riggs from Hip Hop Atlanta. She will be coming in as a special guest, and we are bussing in the children from the local schools. We have six major, uh, D-one colleges that will be coming to Parker, setting up tables, actually filling out applications and, um, and taking resumes and everything in order to enter the college. They're gonna have, uh, some special scholarships available, uh, for the students that's interested in, uh, coming to their, uh, schools. Uh, Dr. Perry Ward will also be there, and Congresswoman Sewell will be one of the speaker also, will also, uh, be attending this event. And I'm just very excited about this event. We have had an opportunity for a lot of good things to come to the high schools, and I think it's an opportunity for the, uh, the young people to actually see people that they prob- I probably would never get an opportunity to see half of these people that's coming in because I have no access to them. But it's partnerships with different organizations all over the world coming together and taking notice. And wanting to come into Birmingham, they could pick any other state. They do not have to be, it don't have to be in Birmingham. But it's just a point, if you ask, you don't know what you will receive. And just for us to just ask them to come, and then they saying it's okay, and Mayor, I would just love if you could just be there and just, uh, uh, bring a we- a welcome because they're gonna have the, um, uh, actually, the production crew will actually be there from, from Hip Hop Atlanta will actually be coming in also. Thank you.
Counselor Abbott?
Go ahead, just not make a comment.
Yes?
The council lady. Uh, council lady, I want to personally thank you for your remarks that you made during my mother's home-going service. Uh, as you know, she loved you, um, and you all had a lot of time and talked together, and I think it helped to show people who my mother was. And we wanted to cash, capture the essence of her spirit, to share it with everyone who came, and you did an excellent job in doing that. So I want to publicly thank you, uh, for carrying out that mission on behalf of my mother. Thank you.
Well, it was an honor for you to ask me. I really thought I was just, like, on a lower grade, and I thought maybe Congresswoman Sewell or the governor, she'd have spoke really for real. And, and, and just knowing your mom growing up, I'll never forget, my mom died at, I was, uh, maybe twelve or thirteen, I was young, and your mother heard about my mom dying, and she actually came round there. They was in the Eastern Stars, my aunt Alberta was in the Eastern Stars. And I was, you know, really upset, and I said, well, I don't have nobody, but she, um, was able to comfort me at the age, at that young age. And there was a bunch of children around my house, and, and she stayed for, like, three hours around all of us, and she actually, then she went and got a big bag at the car, and she had enough stuff for everybody.
Yep.
That was odd, 'cause the whole softball team was over there, but she had enough for everyone. And I could never understand, how did she know every time we came by that house? I don't know whether she just kept it stored somewhere. She had something for each one of us when we passed by that house.
We hadn't figured that out either.
I just hadn't figured it out. And I told you about, they used to call me Gladys Kravitz, and I really didn't, I didn't, I was, uh, didn't really catch on, 'cause I, I knew Gladys Knight was in the group, but I knew they wouldn't call me Gladys. And, but every time I seen a car, uh, 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 two or three cars out in front of her house, like either Miss Cook's house, I would knock on the door, everything all right? And that's, that's, they just, they thought I was about one of the noses, young ch- for the be, you know, the age that I was. I was always just, you know, concerned about the community, and they just gave me that nickname, and it stuck with me all the way, uh, but folks don't call me that now, but it just really stuck with me until I went off into the military. And when I came back from the military, uh, Patricia Alexander, uh, uh, children was small, they was, uh, grandchildren were small, and they started calling me, 'cause they couldn't really say Sheila, they start calling me Sissy, because they couldn't really pronounce my name real good. But I have so many loving memories of your mom and the things that she did. Just, I'm talking about just for any and everyone, she just had something and just something good to say to everyone that would encourage you just to be with all you could be in, in your life. And I just thank you for lending her to the community.
Thank you. And thank you to my department heads who came and, um, as well as city employees.
Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, Mr. Mayor, I did not know your mother, but after I attended her funeral, I felt like I knew her, and she just sounded like such a great lady. I can understand why people loved her so much, and I can understand how you and your brother and, and your sister turned out the way you did because she wouldn't have let you turn out any other way. Um, but, uh, that was an uplifting funeral, and I'm not usually, you know, comfortable at funerals, but I felt like this one was one where I could be there and be happy instead of the usual feelings that I have at funerals. So, I know that y'all are missing her, but it was, uh, definitely a celebration. Um, the Education Committee will meet on Tuesday, February twenty-third at two P.M. in Conference Rooms D and E. Wanted to congratulate former Representative Ben Erdrick and David Councilman, former Councilman David Herring for being honored for their work on behalf of historic preservation in the city of Birmingham. They were honored on Sunday afternoon. I was honored too, but they just trumped something up for me, and those gentlemen actually had done something important. Um, this evening, the Ted Prize winner will be announced with President Ray Watts. Uh, that should be a lot of fun. The, um, I understand there's a dinner with Congressman Sewell tonight. Unfortunately, due to the late notice, I won't be there, but I'm hoping my colleagues who can attend will tell me what's said. Um, February twenty-first, which is this Wednesday, begins the, uh, pastoral installation of Elder Michael Bender and First Lady Betty Bender of Faith Apostolic Church. I think they're going to have, like, a four-day installation, so if you miss one day, you can make another one. Uh, on February twenty-second, the, uh, there will be a, a reception honoring Congressman John Lewis at the Region's Auditorium. So this is a week with a lot of really important meetings and people in town. The neighborhood meetings that are coming up, this coming Monday, Five Point South and Crestwood South will meet, and this coming Tuesday, uh, Redmont Park will meet. And, um, you know, I wanted to say something about the library board appointments because, you know, we pay a lot of lip service on this council to respecting the committee process. You know, if people had applied for these positions, they would have been considered, but people clearly did not apply, but obviously wanted to be on the library board. And there will be more appointments upcoming, and I'm sure that we can fill, fit everyone in who wants to be on the board within reason. But, um, you know, the people, I noticed the date on one of these letters is dated, you know, well, it's dated as if we received it, but it was never provided to us. So I just want to say, either respect the darn committee process or just be quiet, because I am tired of hearing people say how much they want the committees respected, and then they don't respect them. And that's all I have to say, and I don't really need a response because it'll just be more talk, and I'm tired of talk.
Counselor Lundey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Economic Development Budget and Finance Meeting will be Monday, February twenty-second at four P.M. Please submit all items for the agenda by Wednesday, the seventeenth, to Jose Perry, uh, noon tomorrow. All items into Jose Perry by noon tomorrow for Monday's four P.M. meeting. I'd like to acknowledge, uh, Reverend Eric Hall, uh, who is Executive Director for Peace Baptist, uh, Missionary Baptist Churches, uh, nonprofit, their CDC. He's being, um, awarded tomorrow for Community Service Award at the A.G. Gastner Conference, uh, and that'll take place, uh, at the BJCC from eleven to one. Uh, those of you who know Eric in District Nine, he, uh, works hard in the field office, uh, for District Nine as well as for his church, and he is really a hands-on, uh, servant and very deserving of this community service award that he will receive on tomorrow. So hats off to you, preacher, and keep up the good work. That concludes my announcements, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and in the mayor's absence, um, I continue prayers for the Belle family. Uh, I thought my colleague, uh, from District Six, Counselor Tyson, did a great, uh, job in, um, sharing her personal story as relates to her relationship with Miss Little, uh, and I hope the resolution that we received from this council will be, uh, appreciated as the mayor expressed, uh, earlier. Uh, we also, on this past Friday, uh, had a great event at Huffman High School. I want to thank Dr. John Lyons and the principal there, along with his staff, for the invitation to come, uh, speak to the students, uh, on their anti-bullying program. We have a brief video to share with you this morning.
Good music can usually lead to good dialogue, and that was the goal for the anti-bullying program held at Huffman High School. Birmingham City Council Pro-Tam Jay Robeson surprised the students with not just any old concert, but with a fun afternoon listening to tunes from Birmingham native R&B artist Alvin Garrett of Jessica Katz and hip-hop trio DFM. Through their performances, the musicians delivered powerful messages on the dangers of bullying.
So to get young people together within the school system and hearing a message about, you know, anti-bullying or ending violence definitely resonates amongst their, their peer group. And, you know, I try to let the peers and young people lead this effort. Right now, we're experiencing war zones in our neighborhoods and communities throughout, and young people now need to know, hey, they need to stand up.
During the assembly, the student organization known as PALS, which stands for Peer Advisory Leadership, helped to create an environment where students could relate to the many examples given from those who had faced and overcome similar challenges of bullying. Students were also charged by school administrators to look at ways that they can serve as role models both in their schools and in their communities.
The kids have been going through a lot. They've seen a lot of violence take place on TV. There's a lot of bullying that go on every day, and sometimes the students need a different voice. So it was very instrumental that Councilman Robeson came out today and spoke to the kids and put it on their level where they can understand it.
Students who attended the program said the information that was given was very beneficial, and they hope that together they can stand up against the growing act of violence.
I pray and hope that my peers, um, did learn a valuable lesson that bullying is serious and that it needs to be stopped. It can cause many problems, very bad problems.
Counselor Robeson echoed the students' call to end bullying, stating that it's time to get back to the real intention of getting an education.
Young people now need to know, hey, they need to stand up. Uh, it's time to do some more positive things in our community. Let's get, let's get in the books. Let's do the right things. Let's get our education. I think that's what's most important, and, uh, I just appreciate, uh, Dr. Lyons at Huffman for the opportunity to come and be a part of the anti-bullying program today.
For all the latest news and information, connect with our community or visit our website and subscribe to news updates.
And thank you for that video to the Public Information Office, Kiara Perry, and, and for being on site, along with Brittany Sharp with the, uh, narrative, uh, for that actual presentation. And truly, I want to thank, uh, again Huffman High School and Dr. John Lyons, uh, for the invitation to come out and speak on the anti-bullying program to your PALS, um, group. Um, great unity breakfast on this past week at Winona High School. Mayor, I know you couldn't make it due to the, uh, circumstances, but your wife was there along with, uh, your son, and, uh, it was truly a great, uh, program with, uh, Reverend Jesse Jackson and his, uh, presentation to, uh, the Winona community and throughout the, uh, southwest Birmingham area. Uh, kudos to, uh, Principal Hope for her presentation, and, uh, she's done this thirteen years in a row, and it's truly been a great event for, uh, the community. Uh, I want to congratulate the Winona Lady Dragons. Uh, they are now in the sub regionals. They won last night over Parker, uh, on last night, and, uh, ladies are now headed to Wallace-Hansville, uh, to play against Columbia High School on Saturday, February twentieth at six o'clock in the regionals. So, uh, good luck to them. And I cannot say that and say, not say about my, my, uh, my daughter's team. Uh, they advanced last night, uh, by beating, uh, Valley High School, and they'll play at Alabama State on Thursday morning, uh, against Hillcrest Tuscaloosa in the regional, so congratulations to them also. And, uh, Doug Raglin, who actually serves on our Birmingham Planning Commission, um, is actually, uh, his family has debuted on Family Feud. I don't know if you all seen that or not, uh, but the Raglin family's on Family Feud. Uh, I won't tell you how much they've won so far, but they won a good amount of money, uh, with Mr. Harvey, and so tune in to the segments coming up, and you'll see Doug Raglin, uh, Dr. Raglin, his family representing well. I'd like to move for a congratulatory resolution for the tenth anniversary celebration for Reverend Jesse Young at Mount Olive Missionary Baptist Church.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Move the item?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Uh, we'll be honoring, thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Reverend Young on his tenth anniversary on this Sunday at Mount Olive Missionary Baptist Church at eleven o'clock. Uh, Garden Highlands will meet today. On Thursday, Hillman will meet in Jermania Park. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Counselor Skiles?
Thank you, and I'm glad you brought that up, uh, uh, Council President Pro-Tam, because the Raglins actually live in District One. Uh, they aired actually yesterday, uh, at six o'clock on WABM, which is sixty-eight, and also they'll air again, um, on tonight at six o'clock. And so I have that on my Facebook page. And with that having said, Mr. President, I'd like to move for a congratulatory resolution on the Raglin family's behalf. And I so move?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Move the item?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. President. Birmingham, I appreciate you all. We got a lot of smart people here. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Central City Neighborhood meets Tuesday, February sixteenth, which is tonight, six to seven, Central City Library, Richard Archen Jr. Auditorium. Graymont meets tomorrow, the seventeenth, from four-thirty to five-thirty, Birmingham Public Library at Smithfield. Southside meets Thursday, the eighteenth, from six to seven, at the Exchange Club, Family Skills Center. Druid Hills meets Monday, the twenty-seventh, from six-thirty to seven-thirty. The St. James Missionary Baptist Church in Crestwood North meets Monday, the twenty-second, from six-thirty to seven-thirty, at Girls Inc. Counselor Tyson?
You know, uh, I, I know I'm a freshman and I just got on the council, but I feel like on these boards, we should have fair representation from all areas. The, uh, library board have no one from District Six on the board. I felt like that, uh, the libraries that's in District Six, the heat was off, um, la- the air was off all of last year, and the heat was off in November. They, they hadn't got it fixed yet. So, we need representation, not tomorrow, but we need it now. And it, it was up to, if I'm in a position to where I can get someone to represent District Six on these boards where there's no representation, I'm gonna do everything I can and make sure District Six is represented on the board. I don't care if it's a cleanup board. Uh, I'm gonna make sure District Six got somebody on there. Thank you.
All right. Well, I want to thank Officer Lewis from downtown Substation, Officer Sampson from the East Precinct for providing our security today. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This meeting is adjourned.